...Monday, August 6, 2018, the Order Play. We are four. Item 3, write-up for review and discussion. Item 3A, appearances. 3A1 is the Halo Group. Ms. Murphy? Either one, whatever's more comfortable. Okay.
Maybe not for you. My name is Melanie Murphy. I'm a lifelong resident of Houston County. I grew up in Warner Robins. I married into Perry thirty-one years ago. I married my husband, Wayne, who was born in downtown Perry at the Gallaudet office. Our entire careers began in helping gallaudet education. We raised our five children here in Perry. In 1994, my parents joined us and moved to Perry as did my sister and her family a few years after that. I tell you these things so you'll understand my vested interest in and love for this city as well as my contributions to making this city a wonderful city. I come to you today to speak to you about a project born of love for people with special needs and the New Perry Hotel. During our corpship, my husband and I often dined at the New Perry Hotel restaurant. I remember the first time I had one of those bacon biscuits, I wasn't sure if I was to bite it or throw it. We love the beautiful gardens which provide a table for the dormants each day. Many Sunday dinners have brought Perry people together through the years. We, like many others, had our wedding rehearsal there. From all over the country, people have shared their fond memories of the New Perry Hotel restaurant. When I was in the third grade, I declared my love for people with special needs. The terminology has changed a lot through years, but my love and dedication is not. I first started working with special people at age nineteen when I started Sunday School class for those with special needs. My career followed this path, and I'm currently in my third second year of teaching in the field of special education. Ten years ago, when the New Perry Hotel closed and was put on the market, my sister and I dreamed of a better use for the facility. We began dreaming of a way to train, employ, and provide housing for people with adult and disabilities and autism. We envisioned the restaurant again with living tablecloths, fresh from the garden, flowers, and great southern food. We saw motor court as individual apartments, and we saw private rooms in the hotel for men on one floor and women on the other. We saw a place where people with special needs could learn new skills in the hospitality business. We saw people gain independence and a sense of purpose who had never had it before. We saw a place of belonging. We saw a place where we could meet the needs of a woefully underserved population, a place whose history and beauty would once again draw people from near and far away. This dream began a decade ago. For years, Angela Cutie also had a dream to provide vocational training, employment, and housing for those with special needs. What she was missing was a location. When she and I talked at Special Olympics in January, we realized our dreams fit together perfectly. We also realized that God had brought us together and was the leader of our dreams. Together, Angela Cutie, Beverly Bickers, April Tu and I formed the Halo Group of Middle Georgia, which was registered by the state as a nonprofit organization in February. We formed our organization to provide education, employment, housing, and community integration. We chose the New Perry Hotel because of its historic value, its dire need for a project with a purpose, and its location. Perry has nothing available to support its citizens with special needs. I'm sure you've heard it said that a city can be judged by the way it treats its most vulnerable citizens. We have some areas of concern in relation to our project. First of all, let me give you some statistics. In the state of Georgia, there are nine hundred and twenty-one thousand households which have at least one member with a disability. In the middle Georgia area, over twenty-one thousand households have a member with a disability. Twenty-one thousand. And one in fifty-nine children have been identified with autism spectrum disorder. Approximately fifty thousand of those children become adults every year. If you don't have a family member with a disability, understand that you or someone you love is an accident away from joining the population we are seeking to serve. We have spoken with people providing services and needing services all over the state as well as closer to home. What we continue to hear from every group is that the need for a program like we propose is great. It supports our state's mission of every Georgian can work. Much to our surprise, many people told us you have to get the city on board. We couldn't imagine any reason why the city would not be on board. We will provide much-needed services to a vulnerable segment of our population and restore beloved historic icon of our city. The beautiful New Perry Hotel is in imminent danger of being demolished without a plan like ours. It took us a little while to realize the city officials weren't on board. After initially talking with Mr. Robin Lowenmilk, the hotel owner, we invited city officials to walk through the hotel with us, to talk about zoning and other issues that we might face. Walking through the hotel with us that day were Robert Smith, Brian Wood, Tracy Hester, and David Stanton. We openly shared our dream with the naive expectation that everyone would see the vision. A few days after that, I talked with Councilman Robert Jones and shared our vision. He seemed genuinely excited about the project. I told him I wanted to talk to each person on the council. Phyllis Bonn Grace was a colleague of mine for many years on Board of Education, working with the same people that we want to serve, so I thought she would be the next logical choice. Robert helped me set up a meeting with her. However, a few days later, I got a call from Robert, who said he'd been told by Lee Gilmore, City Manager, that we couldn't talk anymore and that I couldn't talk to council members because the hotel was a zoning issue. All I had was an idea. I didn't have ownership of the hotel. Yet, I was told I couldn't talk to council members. All I wanted to do was get an honest response about our project. We then scheduled a meeting to talk to unelected city officials concerning zoning. At that meeting, with Brian Wood, Robert Smith, Tracy Hester, and Catherine Edgman, it was determined that our project, as described, could be conducted under the current zoning. After several months of talking with other service providers, people at the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities, and Vocational Rehab, we made it offer to purchase the hotel. To start raising funds and awareness, we decided to participate in June's Food Truck Friday event. Haley Myers was incredibly helpful to us at that time. Then, three days before the event, we received word that we couldn't participate because we were a nonprofit organization. Because we couldn't officially participate in the city's food truck event, Mr. Lowenmilk gave us permission to set up that night on the hotel grounds, where we sell desserts and cold soft drinks. We posted it in on Facebook and received so much support. We had many people dropping by that night to encourage us, donate money, buy our drinks and sweets, and to offer to help in any way possible. Then, on Monday, June 11th, the first business day following our event, Mr. Gilmore requested an ordinance amendment requiring a special exemption for all multifamily developments. On Wednesday, an article in the Houston Home Journal about changes in ordinance called Angela's attention, so we scheduled a time to meet Mr. Wood to get clarification. In addition to Mr. Wood, at that meeting was Mr. Hester and for part of the time, Mr. Smith. During the meeting, we learned of the detrimental effect this change would have on our project. We knew it was imperative that we talk with the mayor and council. We asked if that would be possible. Mr. Smith said he'd see if he could make that happen. However, a few days later, we got an email saying that it would be inappropriate due to possible conflict with property use requirements. But we were directed to the citizens with import portion of city council's meeting. This is a blatant attempt to undermine our project, to prevent us from using the New Perry Hotel to provide housing for people with special needs. The timing of this ordinance is a special concern because it was requested days after we had signed a contract to purchase the hotel. From the very beginning, we've tried to include the city in our plans to avoid the hassle of zoning issues. We have been open and forthcoming from the start. We believe our transparency has been used against us by rushing to push this ordinance change through, which is a direct threat to what we're trying to accomplish. We know we will face hurdles, but we don't expect them to be from our city officials. In fact, what we expect from our city officials is cooperation and support, which includes, but is not limited to, permit fee waivers, expedited review and permitting, utility connection fee waiver, and public infrastructure improvements. These are just base level incentives. We also need your support when it's time to apply for grants. I would expect, when you realize what this project can do for our city, you would go above and beyond this level of support. Your own promotional video, in which I saw many of you, says where history is celebrated and businesses succeed. You must realize that this tax amendment neither celebrates history nor helps businesses succeed. We know God has called us to this project. I look around the room, I see other believers, other followers of Jesus. You regularly attend church, and some of you go to the men's prayer breakfast. You may not be for us, but how can you be against us when you know that when you do to the least of these, you do it unto Jesus? We will use the New Perry Hotel and restaurant to provide training, employment, and housing, but also a sense of belonging to people with adult and disabilities and autism on a beautiful site with immaculate grounds, pleasurable dining, and a host of job possibilities for people with and without disabilities, living life side by side. We need your help to do this. Your support should begin by voting against this ordinance amendment and pledging your cooperation for this endeavor.
Do any member of council have any questions?
I have a... information, like as far as our names and our contact information, if y'all would like to have a copy of this if you have something later.
My question is appropriate to ask questions of all of you. Sure. Tell me how you will fund this.
Well, we will, first of all, get a bank loan initially, and then from that, we'll apply for grants and to get the industrial...
The building.
To get the building and the renovations. But historic preservation grants, they're grants to provide housing and services as well. But so we have actually contacted grant writers, so we know those things have to be done. But once the facility is renovated, then the state federal government pays for housing and services, and that's how the thing... But being a nonprofit, we're not looking to... You know, we've got to make money, but we don't have to go above and beyond. We have to sustain ourselves, and so that's our...
And our Board of Directors is quite strong. We do have two different teams of grant writers. We have, on our Board of Directors, we have Mr. Robin Lowenmilk and Mr. Gary Martin. Both are very well-developed builders, and they have staff on their teams that have grant writing opportunities just for the purpose of the building, to help kind of expedite that process, so their connection needs to help.
And what do you anticipate? The purchase price, the remodeling, kitchen, everything you have to do, what do y'all anticipate that to be?
Right now, we're baseline anywhere, you know, renovation of the building, of course, is going to be substantial, which can be multi... We're looking at between, you know, one to four million dollars offhand, but that is through grant and generated resources. But I think everyone knows that it's going to be a substantial renovation.
And also, could be that, we can all have money coming, but it could be done in stages as far as...
We have...
Three phases.
Well, some places can come in later, but some of them have to be done before you go in the dollars.
Right, absolutely. And that's the most significant portion of it when we look at the timeline. We're looking to begin with the first floor renovations. We're going to look at the motor court first. That's the easiest cost analysis where we have the time we can do that. The motor court, the back area first, and then we were going to look at the dressing interior of the first floor of the building, which is the commercial kitchen, all of the restaurants that we call, the parlor, the gift shop, for the community engagement of the property.
And you anticipate the cost of the kitchen at what?
Oh, well, that's... We have feasibility assessments underway right now with... If you're familiar with Goodwill Industries, they have the Helms Institute, and they also have Edgar's Bistro. We also have a lot of different individuals who have started this kind of restaurant business, and they're all collaborating right now for that portion of it. So like the actual, the numbers there, this has just been, the last couple of months have been about acquiring building, and now we're looking at feasibility schedule. We know that we have that budgeted in, that total cost analysis in that budget. So it'd just be as it unfolds.
And you believe that you can, as I say, beg, borrow, and steal four million dollars?
Absolutely. I'm going to shout it out.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing. Most people would look at this, look at it from strictly the business standpoint, and we believe we're called by God to do this, and He owns the capital of Dallas, and that's all we can... We trust that. In my life, there have been three major times where I had to step out and faith and just trust that the money would be there. One was when I quit my really good job to work part-time to stay home with my children. And it was a great job at Perry High School. It was the dream job. It was everything I ever wanted in a job. But I wanted to take care of my children, and so I quit my job the end of the school year and the next year trusted that God has a part-time job for me as number school and he did, but I had to put my foot in the water first, you know, and step out in the water. Another time was when we adopted our eight-year-old daughter. We... I was working part-time. Wayne's a school teacher, or an administrator at that time, anyway. We had... We ended up with five children, and we didn't have money to give another child. I mean, they're expensive. They keep getting more expensive. But I knew God had called me to take this eight-year-old child who was in foster care, and the money came. And I won't bore you with the details right now, but I'd love to tell you how God provided and continues to provide. And this project with Halo is the same thing. I know when I'm being called, and this is... We're all called to do this, and so we're trusting Him, and we know He will bring it to bear. If, you know, when we say, oh, is this a hurdle or is this a closed door? And we have prayed fervently to close the door. This is a huge endeavor, and the thought of the four of us starting it... Now, we are not... We know we don't know how much it costs to renovate a restaurant. We know the things we don't know, which is why we have people on our Board of Directors, and we are involved with people who do know. And right from the very beginning, we sat down for two hours with Robin Lowenmilk and said, this ain't going to make sense on paper. I said, you're right. It doesn't. It doesn't make sense. Yet he's willing to work with us and believe in us and be on our Board of Directors because he knows, I think he knows it doesn't make sense. And he's... Anyway, it's exciting. And, you know, what we've been surprised at, though, is the lack of communication. We'll hear things that people might be saying, "Talk to us. Let us cast a vision for you." And I hope I've done, I've heard that tonight, but those are all valid questions and questions we have asked ourselves. So we're not going into this blindly saying, "Oh, we want to build it. It sounds like a dream. It sounds horrible." The thought of, if you look at the big picture, but you have to take it one step at a bite that up one bite at a time.
And that's what we're willing and committed to doing.
We have three phases, actually, Mr. Hunt. Three, maybe even four, phases to raise funds over the next twenty-five years. So each phase will be a Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. We're working on those plans and getting the estimates from all the people involved for each phase. And first phase of the first floor, the restaurant, getting that up in there and moving forward, then they run, we'll do the second and third as we go along. It isn't going to happen overnight, but likely it's... It'll take several years.
We just don't know the timing, actually.
And maybe it will happen, but we're not...
And that's some of the things that we are prepared for.
What are you going to do with the girls while you place them all at the scene?
What girls?
Well, it's multi-dimensional, because the way that we envision this and the way that the closing institutions in the state of Georgia and all over the United States has been the biggest initiative in the last fifteen years to get individuals out of institutions and fully integrated into society. That's why the initiative is so large, and there's such a big mainstream push right now to start inspiring individuals like us to come up and provide pathways of engagement in your community, because our core mission is we believe that all people are created by God, and all of them have desires to live a full, purposeful life. And with that, we also believe that a lot of people's source of joy and social interaction comes from sustained employment, successful employment with adequate job skills. When we look at all of that, when you look at the hotel restaurant being a vision of our community, the way that we see it is not just a place that's going to have some people living there like a nursing home, and it's just going to be a restaurant downstairs. This is what we envision, is fully accessible to the public of Perry. We envision this hotel and this beautiful building being in the center of downtown, and then when we're creating and engaging the community to unite together and to participate in downtown events and to walk the grounds and to put more foot traffic downtown, we're hoping that our grounds would be an opportunity to walk in the front door and have seating and gardens and just beautiful outdoor recreational opportunities to sit outside. And the grounds and the opportunities that we've had to even envision what could be done with the building, it's an open book right now. We are kind of actively seeking buy-in from stakeholders that are invested and interested in the idea to help shape and mold the best use of the property. We definitely believe that the way that it's set up is that if you walk into the building and then you have the commercial kitchen with, we have typical employees, general population with, you know, our individuals that were trained for employment and also employing there, but also it's a way to allow the community to come in and not just walk in and sit down and dine on the right side of the restaurant, but they can go into the left side of the restaurant, which was normally formerly known as the tavern, where there'd be a little gift shop or a little sitting area, and you can envision like a coffee or smoothie bar for more casual, more social interaction. Might want to come and get a nice sparkling tea or some kind of neat little, you know, drink that's trendy and sit down and have coffee and play a board game or chess game or card game or something just for social interaction and visiting time. So there's a lot of opportunities for total integration and more like a community gathering place. If we did the residential living, there's a lot of open models that we could do with that, the back motor court. We wouldn't want just a house, you know, a bunch of people living back there with special needs. We also envision typical people possibly living back there as well, so it'd be maybe even considered like an apartment living, you know, just for those areas in the back, which might be a couple of staff, it might be some support staff, it might be a senior citizen. We don't know. The opportunities are open, and we just even look at the interior of the building as a lot of different models, you know, as far as talking to the state, as far as zoning and how they don't want just ten rooms with a second floor with ten females and they don't want to see just a third floor with ten males that are just living there. They don't want them to be isolated. They want them to be, have full access to power, persons, and their choices. That means that wherever they live and wherever they work, they still have opportunities to be transported or taken to different places, to volunteer at Abba House, or to volunteer at the Community Theater, or to go out to their favorite, at the Perry Fairgrounds, or go to movies with their friends, and just a lot of engagement and social interaction for, to increase the quality of life. And we've found, even in the area of special education, that it's not just about quality of life for the people that we serve, there's also an element of quality of life for the individuals that interact with these people. And if you've never interacted and seen the true joy in their capabilities and watched someone master goals that we take for granted and see them master it and gain, and be able to obtain gainful employment and earn their own income, then that's so empowering, and you can watch that spirit grow and see them surpass what our expectations are. So what we really want to do is inspire engagement in the community too, and let this joy of this interaction that happens in the Houston County school system every day in special education classrooms with community teachers and students and parents and community, which is what we all want to do, is engage the community together and come together and unite together. It's not only a state or beautiful building, but to create a great community interaction place for social interaction, just those nice little southern, you know, afternoons or Sunday lunches, or even banquets and rehearsals and dinners and all those wonderful things
It's a wonderful idea. It's a wonderful play, but it still takes money.
Melanie, I appreciate the fact that you explained to us because there are all kinds of rumors going around, and you know what I had been told, it was not, you were trying to put a case in on a...
We love those places.
I don't think it's about downtown.
No, no, no. We love those places too. Yes.
So I feel a credit to us in explaining.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you very much. We should run and... Item 3B2, no, excuse me, 3B, the Department of Economic Development, present a presentation of the three city websites on the farm.
Yes. Could you hear me, Mayor and Council? So I'm going to go all the way around. There you go. Okay, so I've been working with the Regional Commission over the past several months. I'm going to come behind y'all again. Maybe last time, forgot to drive and run up here, but we have been working on refreshing the website, and the whole point of refreshing the website was to make sure it is as user-friendly for our residents and visitors that visit the site, that everything is streamlined as it can be, just updated, just making sure all the information is correct. We've had a lot of changes, so just wanted to kind of take you through some of the main pages. This looks a little different up here. This would look more similar than if you were looking at it from your cell phone, which a lot of people do these days. So this is the main page. We have set it up where there's our video. We set these accordion styles, drop bounds for, we felt were probably some of the more frequent reasons you come to the website, but you'll see these accordions, there's a lot on the website. They're pretty user-friendly, they stand out, like online payments, you can just go right here to pay any of your, you know, bills or property taxes. The video that we worked so hard on, that she referenced earlier, is there. Also, there's, all the contact information is here under menu. We have it laid out where under government's the mayor's office, and there the mayor will be, and a message from him, and then a way for you to contact him, his phone number, email, and then the morning coffee with the mayor that I did a few months back. And then also, you know, there's just some council page. So we made these pages, we tried to think of ways of the way that people would think, like where do I need to go to contact my councilman? So we're trying to make it as easy as we could to find it. There it is. So all, everyone is, the group picture's there, but then you're listed... That's without y'all, and then this video is what I do, and then here's the council And so you all are there with your pictures and your emails and what district and post you are. And then a few other things I wanted to make sure I showed you is we have a new tab called "How Do I?" And we felt like this was important, just to have a quick place people can go for those frequently asked questions. Again, it's that accordion style, so how to make online payments, how to reserve rental facility, building permit, it's got a little bit of everything here, and it shows you can click there and has either the answer for you as far as like when my trash is picked up, or it could take you to another link, like here, it'll take you to the facility, I mean, the rental facility page, and we could look to see how to rent like the Perry Arts Center. One thing we just add there is, which would be nice, is the calendar. So they can't preserve it here, but they can take a quick look to see if the Perry Arts Center is busy or not on that day. So that saves them some time, and they don't have to call in if they see it's not available. And let's see what else. But hopefully you can see how it's a little bit easier to get around. This is operations, these are all our different departments slash just different functions, major functions that we have here. You know, each page is a little bit different depending on the department, but in some have more than others. If you go to like Fire and Emergency Services, you'll see here where they have, we tried to put more pictures up, it just felt like it was more eye-catching, but for the most part, everybody has, you know, their contact information, which is really important. Here, they have an FAQ on their page, which is nice, so should hopefully answer questions that people frequently ask the fire department, so they also have to call. Sign up for the newsletters here. Also, at the bottom of the page, sorry, the homepage, I have, I do news feed, so constantly will be updated with anything new that's going on as far as events or announcements. So here, you'll see the FYI, the music festival's coming up, Food Truck Friday, this flash pad was open in the New York City program. And if you click on any of these, it's going to take you directly to that information. Below is, this is all the homepage, upcoming events coming up, also have the Facebook feed here. So if they're not on Facebook, you actually can pretty much read some of the stuff that's already on there on Facebook, or they can go ahead and like our page and start following us. And then down here is quick links to our major partners, there's links there, again, the contact information. So I'm not going to go on and on, it's a big website, a lot of information, but like I said, been working really hard on this. Take a look at it on your laptop, so it'll look a little different than this, but this is more of the mobile view. But any questions for me? I hope y'all, I hope y'all like it. If you have any requests or think I should do it a different way, we can definitely work on that, but...
Well, that's it. Good luck.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Council? Any other questions, Council? Just thanks for the hard work, yes, but I mean, it turned out to be a very, very useful site. And it seemed easy to navigate and you can answer most of your questions and just get much of the information you need. You guys did a very good job.
Thank you. And I had lots of input from the department, so I shouldn't have had what I was doing. They told me what to put on there, so, thank y'all.
Thank you. Item 3B two is the Downtown M.A.S. map kiosk location.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to tell you that at the Perry Convention District Bureau meeting last month, they voted to pass the calls of the map service design with Burton Burt we talked about before. So they have resorted to cost of that service review also, we will be proceeding with getting the map design initiated. Now the big decision will be where the kiosk would be located. Perry Main Street Design Committee has recommended placing the kiosk in the planter bed in front of Chamber Office at 900 Carroll Street, perpendicular to the street, so there'd be perpendicular traffic and the foot traffic there on the sidewalk. The committee thought it's a natural destination for people seeking that kind of information as well as there being a lot more foot traffic in that area than in some other areas. Mr. Smith and I have discussed it quite a bit and have suggested the corner of Ball and Carroll Street near the statue, it would be visible from both Ball and Carroll Streets there, which required eliminating one parking place and raising that area up, building it up with pavers to extend the sidewalk there to accommodate it, but that also provides an opportunity to create some pedestrian enhancement with a bench or some additional landscaping there. The Chambers position, as McQuinn said, is that we prefer it not be located in front of that building because they like having the two bike bollards that are there right now for bicyclists and putting the signage there would require elimination of at least one, maybe both of them. And they feel it would also create potential for not having as much visibility to the building if it needed, the sign had to be turned parallel to the street, so there was concern about that. I did reach out to Houston County a couple of works, they had no issues with the signage being located on the sidewalk area that we were proposing, however, they did, were de-opposed to locating it on the lawn for a couple of reasons. I reached out also to Greg Jones at the Georgia Department of Transportation and he said that in the near future, Ball Street will come off of their list of state routes and once that's occurred, they, we would not need to adopt approval for that location, but if we are moving forward with this project, before that occurs, we would need to go through their approval process if the corner of Ball and Carroll were selected. So it is planned, it's your decision where this needs to go and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Council?
Oh, Mr. Ball, if you can build a work, a courtyard side, I think you need to make sure it's away from the street enough and landscaped enough that we don't get the same problem we've got in some of the crossing lights where vehicles kill the road.
Any others? Mr. Jones, I think the timing for Ball Street to come off the state route.
He said it was going to happen in the next sixty to ninety days when I spoke with him right at the end of July, so very near the future.
I assume they're right. Any other questions, Council? Thank you, Ms. Ed. Does Council want to make a decision on where it goes tonight? We'll take it under our, thank you. Item 3B three is the Restaurant District recommendations, Ms. Ed.
Yes, sir. We are looking at ways to promote the newly designated Restaurant District, I was asked to come up with some recommendations and I'd like to go through those with you right now. I recommend creating a page on the city website that would be similar to the one in your attachment showing the OCD, Open Container District at Downtown Newman, and that is a temporary page, it pops up whenever they have an event where they're allowing a permit for open container, but we could do something similar to that and just have it on our page all the time. It would include the name of the district as well as the rules for open containers and have a link to similar information on the city's Facebook page. We could integrate the map and the designation into our city's wayfinding initiative with a sign on the scale and in the style of the Downtown Garden Park sign that we use in KMA samples for wayfinding signs. I took that sign and Photoshop did a little bit to show how we could easily integrate the Restaurant District signage example that was used in our branding campaign materials we received when we worked with Chandler Place. So you'll see that example there, it's a fork in the knife and again, I think it's very complimentary and that is a pedestrian scale sign. I would recommend considering locating these signs on the perimeter of the district as pedestrians are entering that area. I would advise against cluttering downtown, couldn't do too much signage and no alcohol beyond this point and that kind of information. So rather than doing that, I suggested possibly putting a QR code on that sign so people can scan it and get that information sent directly to the mobile device. Mr. Smith and I discussed painting the asphalt to indicate the district, but we know that that is a commitment of perpetual maintenance if that's pursued and if in the future somebody did not want to be doing that, it would be like the dogwoods that are on the asphalt right now, we decided that was just not a possibility and we wanted to investigate very much. I did want to mention that, back to our kiosk we were just talking about, we can show the district boundaries on that sign as well. And I have been working on an information sheet that would be at the very end of your packet of information for this topic, that would be distributed to prospects for our community, restaurant prospects, so that we could also post this information in restaurants so that people can see that if they have not, have a mobile device with them. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 3D four, recommend adjustment of wayfinding signage for both Perry Arts Center and Perry Park, be the standard destination sign. Mr. Smith?
Mayor. Mayor and Council, moving forward with the wayfinding signage program, you will recall, I believe it was a couple of meetings ago, you approved moving forward with United Signs to implement Phase Two of that program. We have a for you tonight, your consideration of the vote from Mr. Gilmore, where he is recommending transitioning a couple of those signs to different pipes of signs. So basically, we have, you know, the monument signs out here in front of our facilities here that are very nice, very well done, look great, people love them. We also have a sign in front of Animal Control, I don't know if y'all have seen that new sign down there that has dual posts with the nice, also a very good looking sign. We had slated in this phase for one of those dual post signs to go up in front of the Arts Center and also Roger Park. And, you know, after discussions and things, we think it might be appropriate to have the monument signs in front of both of those facilities due to their, they have the very public type facilities, very popular destination type facilities here in the city. So, you know, for y'all tonight is, you know, that recommendation, I can tell you that it would be a swing of about nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Each?
Total, yes, sir. Each of those monument signs is roughly fourteen thousand, each of the dual post signs is about four thousand, so it'd be almost twenty dollars.
Wait a minute. Mr. County signs we have at the Arts Center today, we probably ought to have a place of the same type, but probably we have about one minute. It's the long term of this, it's, you know, the pole signs I think are going to take a whole lot more time, it's long term than monument signs, so, however, we'd like to consider to go with the monument signs those two locations, so. Any others? Would we use a monument sign? A monument sign. Item 3C, please, the help us with the city manager, please see one is considered solicitor of the provision.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, your packet is a memo from me suggesting that you all prohibit solicitation in the city. Currently, we allow solicitation to come in if they come in and have proper permits signed, you know, individuals signed, all remember that type of stuff through the police department. We also already have a few exceptions to that, like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, religious groups, remember that? What we'd like to recommend to you all is that you just prohibit solicitation except for those groups in the world. Yeah, most people now do their shopping on the internet, generally what we wind up having is just a series of complaints about people coming through in neighborhoods disturbing them, soliciting, there's not very many of them popping now and so we just recommend that we prohibit it. Like I said, those groups that are allowed right now in your ordinance are remaining as exemptions to that, still in pursuit.
This is residential, since that's.
Yes, that's right, yeah, house to house.
Not business.
No, 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 this is just go mail all their stuff out or whatever, this is just going house to house to sell a vacuum, whatever.
Would it affect the ice cream truck?
No, because the ice cream truck would be mobile, it's all permanent.
That's why the answer is no. Council? I was gonna talk about that. Very good. Item 3C two is considered formally with the Houston County Board of Commissioners for the Saint Patrick's Drive Extension, Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, also in your packet is a memo from me referring to a change in a recommendation from the administration. You may remember at your last work session, we were approached by Houston County for the city to participate in the Saint Patrick's Drive Extension project and there was a higher price with that, do a lot of engineering. You all, and I think rightly so, felt that that was not appropriate to go for at that time. Subsequent to that, I've been contacted by the county and the county has mentioned two things that I think warrant a change in the council's position. First and foremost is, is that the county has advised us that they have documentation from all the property owners, that the property owners will donate whatever right of way is required at no cost. You may remember that was one of the concerns that we had before and a major one. Second is that they're only going to have whatever engineering work is done or survey work primarily in order to develop those right of way maps to provide to the property owner so you can have a legal description of the property to switch over. One of the other things that has come up also is that there is now a, envisioned a less expensive way to get over to perimeter road. You may remember originally they were talking about the only plus connector, remember that? Jogging around and all that, well, the county has, in conjunction with some property owners, has come up with a more direct route, coming directly into St. Clara, perimeter road. So because of those reasons, I would recommend to you all that the city pay up to fifty-seven thousand five hundred, which is one half of the county's estimate of the cost for obtaining the right of way. One of the other things the county has stated, which is in good condition, I think, for us, is that all the right of way will be titled to the city. One of the other concerns we have, to say, to address the issue about property owners is that if we hold off very much longer, you may have changes in ownership or whatever and then you have some type of development coming in, you lose that property because of some, but I think it'd be advantageous to strike down.
I think it's a good suggestion, I think we should do it, but I have a question. If the title of the property to the city is still, is still not in the city lands, right, and should we also add after its title to the city, can we delay the annexation or do we have to?
I'd like to work into that and track it.
Would it be any different than us in Atlanta to San Antonio Road? If a road, proposed roadway, the right of way is serious.
Other than that, I think that you have to get, is it complete, do you have that entitled yet from the island?
Well, it would, because both ends would be connected to the city. Ends of how, some of the property, some of the property that's led east of the, of the proposed road would become an island and then still be in the county. But the street itself would be connected to the city of both ends and so, if, for me, that's very much the same thing as San Antonio Road, because there's nothing on San Antonio Road that's in the city of the road in the right of it, so it seems to me that that would be a logical thing to do. I'm just curious.
Well, the only difference is that general assembly to the San Antonio Road, we didn't do the San Antonio Road.
But the same thing is true.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I would, I would not anticipate that there'd be any objection from the county, since the county's proposing, that's, that's the first major obstacle, but I would suggest to have the city attorney check about annexation.
I'm not saying we ought to do it, I'm just asking a question, should we do it, if we basically do it all at one time or successively?
Successively.
Counsel, any thoughts? Mr. Johnson?
We need to forward you.
Who? 3C three is the summary of how to advance.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I provided to you, and also provided to all the members of the management team.
Mr. Gilmore, is that an item pool just talked about, we need to protect the vote on the Orange Meeting? On that, just to get consensus involved.
Just consensus, because you already previously approved the project. Provide in your packet a notice that went out to all the different departments and everything over the course of fiscal year 2018, some personnel actions that were done. The primary reason I wanted to present this to you all, Z, other than just for your information, is to highlight what I consider to be a very important aspect about what Perry does, and that is through council's direction, the series of opportunities for employees to make more money or to advance. And I think this is important to bring up and discuss because some of other surrounding communities have gotten themselves into an issue, for example, with the county where there's been concerns expressed. You may remember about the fact that they give a two percent cost of living or pay plan adjustment, but then that's all they give. And consequently, you can have an employee who has been there three years, an employee who has been there ten years, conceptually an employee who just came on and they could all be looking the same, right? Everybody with me on that? And there's been some other discussions relative to that. I would imagine from time to time, each of you as elected officials and policymakers are fed up because an employee will say that he or she is not paid enough, which is certainly their right and could be correct or could not be correct. But I think what's important is to point out here is the opportunities that you provide to employees for them to advance. And they are able to advance on that strictly based on the initiative that they take, it's not dependent on whether someone else resigns or leaves or whatever the case may be. So for example, we have the in-classification increases, which is where an employee can get approximately a three percent pay increase if they meet certain criteria for in-classification. You also have a merit increase, which you will provide consistently each year. We do have opportunities for promotions, which I realize a lot of folks do. You also provide education award, you may remember we had some discussion on that previously, but any employee who goes out and gets a degree will be paid an increase in money. You also have the career track process, where an employee picks up the You also have the career track process, where an employee picks up a certain skill level, and they're able to automatically advance up, you know, with a new classification adjustment. We also encourage if, if people are qualified for transfers, as well as, you know, when the opportunity provides, or an opportunity for promotion. Nothing that you need to do, other than, at least in the manager's opinion, pat yourselves on the back, about your incredible wisdom and everything that you have, because it does make you different. Plus, plus, it goes along the lines, which Perry historically has stated, which is that if you build up your skill level, the city of Perry will reward you.
Ask a question, counsel? Do you have information? I don't know.
Yeah, you are that good.
Item three C four, position request.
Calling up on how good you are. Had an opportunity to go back and take a look at where we are on some of our revenue streams and everything, and there are two things we'd like to recommend to council that you authorize us to do. The first one is to shift the event coordinator position from part-time to full-time. You remember, we had some discussion with that, budget session and everything. As an example, with the excess, super success of food truck project, and a number of the different projects and everything we have coming out, we believe that it would be advantageous for you to authorize that position to go from part-time to full-time. As I stated in there, that position is supported through the hotel motel tax, revenues are higher than what we originally had projected, both this fiscal year and FY nineteen, and so therefore, that'd be able to be funded without any support from the general fund. The second position, which we remember was also discussed in the budget session and everything, was utility systems inspection. You remember, I hope the discussion we had on that. We are not seeing any drop-off relative to our construction and everything, and we're starting to move into more new construction growth, you know, for example, is it summer training, she all just got a note on it, which indicates that a number of our subdivisions that already had the infrastructure in, have been built out, or possibly been built out, and new construction coming in, and we need to, to have that position. That position would be funded between the water and sewer fund and the small water utility fund, based on systems that have to be inspected. They are in a financial situation to support that, and we recommend that you authorize this.
Does this question have to be certified, and you, you know, trained in order to qualify to be a guy?
They would have to have some certain skills, but not necessarily.
Counsel?
I prefer, for the opportunity to go to Bainbridge a week ago, and spend a good bit of time with their assistant city manager and their Main Street manager, and one of the things that they have utilized effectively is a special events coordinator, who is full-time reporting to the Main Street manager, and they're doing unbelievable things, and I think that we can do the same thing, but it will take a full-time person to do that.
You may remember that this has been the general process and long-term plan you had talked about as well, for this, for that.
I think we need to take it from part-time. Because she's doing a great job in there, so we, more things that she can do, and there are some things that we need to talk to her about.
There we go.
So I, I, I think that that's a good thing, that, you know, if we can get it done, get it done, for part-time.
Consensus to move forward with both recommendations?
No, this will be not a conversation.
I'd like a little bit more. I'd want to move forward quicker on your. Thank you. Item three C five, for funding options for the gas line project.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, in your packet is a, information provided by Ms. King, talking about two funding options for the upgrade of our main gas feed line coming into the city. As you can see, there are two options we have. The first one is with a regular revenue bond, and the second is with the GMA lease. Administration recommends to you to go with the revenue bonds, it says a twenty-year pay-off period, rather than maximum fifteen years on GMA. You may remember, we're talking about, you know, how much it is, a bunch.
Four point six million, huh?
I think so, something like that. Plus, we may have to kick it up a little more, maybe, with our bid prices, I agree? So therefore, I just think that the longer we can extend up the pay period, the better off we have.
We're talking about a steel mine, aren't we?
Yes.
Price of steel. Counsel?
It goes, in the letter, there's two numbers there, the four point six million, plus two million that we'll actually need for the water well part, if I take that.
Right, and we're, right now, we're just on.
But are you going to go ahead and, is the revenue bond going to be for the four point six million? Or is it anything?
I, I would imagine probably they're going to be two revenue bonds, for the gas.
All right. Total's two point six million dollars over a twenty-year period.
Still working, yet.
Water, water.
Consensus, the council, to move forward with the revenue bond for the two point six million for twenty years.
For the, for the gas.
For the gas. Three C six is authorized professional services contract for the Perry border monitoring project.
Mayor, mayor council, as you are aware, the city of Perry is an MS four designation with the SADP, and this designation comes with certain requirements. One of those requirements is to have an impaired waters plan for the city. Currently, we don't have an impaired waters plan, and we don't have the technological capabilities or capacity to create one on our own. So what you have before you tonight, of your consideration, is a proposal to integrated science engineering to prepare the impaired waters plan for us. I can tell you that they did the impaired waters plan for Warner Robins and Alston County, and we spoke with staff persons in both of those places, and said they did a great job. It should be all required associated with EPD MS four permitting, and I would recommend moving forward integrated science engineering.
Counsel? Any issues? In the five thousand dollar area?
Was five thousand two hundred and fifty, yes, sir.
I don't see where we have to go.
Twenty dollars.
Not to be it?
This is professional services, and, well, they won't officially say so, this is still EPD recommended, and we need to get that plan done quickly without any issues going to be.
And then they do a break-off of some of the other one, right?
Yes.
Move forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Item three D, the offer of the, the terms, we want to follow relative to fireworks.
Yes, sir. Couple weeks ago, my ordinance to you to deal with, the warning ordinance, city period adding fireworks, super fireworks, specific maneuveration of that list, always just find in there, kind of broadly, and there's a list of items that hit that definition, that the city says these things are per se, and those violations, going to have fireworks to that, the, follow, let's say Warner Robins City, if they're real, it's in Alston County, and it was directed, you know, on the same page. There were a few questions you had, the first was, does the warning process in the noise ordinance apply to the fireworks, and then it answered, yes. If you're going to detail, the legal reason behind it, but yes, it would apply. The, the, the other questions were about the chamber of Congress's permitting process, as well as the playgrounds, and what I'll tell you is that, that our ordinance, and the state law that allows cities without these ordinance, without these ordinance, builds with super fireworks, the emission thereof, this is different than fireworks, or what, what we would consider the big production, those folks are required to have a license from the ATF, they also have to have a certification from the state, fire safety.
The street block?
I think it's the state fire, they changed, so they have a reason, I think that's what it's called. And also have to have a license from the, from the, we're, they're going to do it in. There is some interaction between the fire department, local fire department, and those professionals that come and do those shows, but the city as a whole doesn't have any ordinance that's allowed without anything that would prevent them from doing it. That's kind of the state, anyway, state, however, anyway, so, in short, it wouldn't affect that, so, having a show.
I believe that's it. Would that answer the questions, counsel? Thank you very much. Item three D, it's a leave the services for walking, three D one, is considered sunshades and benches in this plan.
Mayor, mayor and council, we hope you're all pleased with this splash pad, seems to have been wildly successful, lots of kids out there at all times. The first day it opened, Mr. Gilmore and I, and then the spillops followed up behind us, went out there and took a look at it, the first thing we noticed was, it's hot, there's no shade. So you have, you know, caretakers, parents or whatever, of these children out there, and they were all kind of crammed against the building, trying to get a little light and a little shade, it was coming out from the building. And we had originally planned on having shade structures and benches and that type of thing in phase two of this project, but we'd like to go ahead and move that forward a little bit, go ahead and get some seating areas and shade structures out there. What you have before you tonight, your consideration, is a purchase of some shade structures and some benches, and you can see on there, I would recommend you purchasing three of these shade structures here, the old ones, to be placed strategically around the splash pad in there, and then also the acquisition of six benches to also be strategically positioned throughout the splash pad footprint. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
You're all going to put some benches under the shade, right?
Absolutely.
We don't, the customer.
But they will.
Yeah, they will, I don't know about that.
Yeah, it was just seeing those ladies sitting on that concrete, kind of bothered me, pull up against the building.
These will be angry.
Yes, they will be, they'll be angry by concrete.
Looks good in there.
Yep.
You're talking about this show, eighteen hundred dollars a piece?
Yes, sir.
And three of them?
Three of those, yes, sir, and then six benches, that's seven hundred and ten dollars each, for a total of nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
Maybe eight or four from the splosh. Probably one of the questions, I want to, I noticed on Facebook, some of the comments, some people, in a understanding where you meant to turn the thing on, and say some signage or something, don't you?
Should have been put up today. Yes, sir. Look, I think we're getting it, though, we're getting less and less calls about it.
Will those people go out and pay?
Uh, we, we can, we're just going to purchase it, it's kind of operating, supplies.
So, five thousand, win the money? And look about, which has to be a, sort of five. Lee?
Sir?
Don't you have to get it through the little platform?
At this particular level, it is up to you. Administration's recommendation is, number one, we're not aware of any local vendors that do any of this type of stuff, number two, there's time, right? You know, getting this stuff in.
How do you get it out, and be looking?
For this relatively small amount, benches are kind of like our standard bench, right? So, you may remember, we already bid them out before it came up with, with the vendor for that, so, administration's recommendation, we could just go ahead and purchase. If you are.
Yeah, I would like to see those ladies sitting on that, cold, hard concrete, and they need shade, and they need boost too.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, item three, item four, discussion, and if you need to address, not only the project, item four, council member items. Final break.
I'd just like to say, I'm really proud of our splash pad, and I just cannot wait until we get the rest of it done in the next couple of years, I'm waiting with bated breath on the bucket, and the slides and all that, but I enjoy seeing the kids out there enjoying it. What about the area?
We're going to talk about this, Mr. Lee.
I'm a boy.
You been broke?
Yes, my, I have one thing, I went down to State Farm, and a fellow lady, and they were complaining.
Which one?
This one, on Main Street. They were complaining, when they come around the building, they come out, they're being blocked by trucks, they can't see, I guess, only when the theater having something down there, you know, I mean, that was one of the concerns, and they brought to my attention, and I don't know how we're going to live on that, unless we just put it, that nobody car right there, because when they come out from working, they got to look to the right or they turn on the main, look to the left, or they turn on the Main Street, and they say they can't see, and they worry about getting hit, you know, and they got to quick to get a car in the road, and go, come, come through there, they don't know what they've got here, a truck or something there in the way, they can't see what's coming. There's something we need to consider, I don't know what we have to, shut that one space down, or what, so they can see, that's the space right there, the car, the truck bar. And I told them I'd bring it.
Mr. Gilmore?
Have a look, take a look at the study. I think we already have a prohibition right by that drive, we can be enough, be a big in this space.
This has come up, this has come up.
I think, I know we had some issues further down.
Right.
What can we have that take?
Anything, bro? Don't? Several folks have complained to me about grass, about air grass, in there, what we should be the same, still across from the two home in that new area, we, we put there, it's always, it always, like that. How many times, is that a contract at work?
No, it's in-house.
Oh, that's in-house?
In-house.
And how many times do we in-house cut it?
Every other week.
We don't have to do something, cut down on the water.
So, every week?
Whatever it takes. I'm just worried.
This is city management, we've talked about this before, about how far council wants to go for spending money uncut. You may remember, we talked about, contracted out with some of the folks, all that type of stuff, and then you said, no, that needs to be kicked up to every two weeks, I think it was. Now, it's just that one location, you know, I think we can probably handle that okay.
That's the one I get to complain about, I don't know what they're looking at, but if you keep starting, that one, we, we, does that lead to everything, because you got that rain and grass out of the sand more, so.
That's, that's, that's what my concern.
I think, I think that's a good concern, because even from a treasury, they got cut the grass, and dribble day, with the rain coming, it back up again, and I can understand what Mr. Riley's saying, but, like you said, I think we need to stick to what we have, because the grass just grow real fast, you know, I mean, ain't nothing we can do about that, ain't no way we can control that, like you said, one section, we got a lot of other grass, all of it, and it came just to zero on that, you know, and that's one of, that's how I feel about it, because we need to leave it like we got it, and then, because it rains, then you go out there a day and cut it before Friday, and be raining, and be ready to cut again, so we just, you know, like you said, that getting into more our money that we got, so we need to kind of keep it, because we need to have it every two weeks, and I think that feels, you know, out of why, if it want to, it won't be growing, but right now, if it is raining, the grass will get that quick.
I'll check to make sure, Mr. Hunt, they are making that, so.
I'm sorry?
I'll check to make sure they're making that schedule.
But, but what he just said, we got to keep our city looking pretty, that's, that's our goal, part of it, is to keep the city looking pretty, and if you've got grass this high, in the populated areas that people travel by every day. day, keeping the city pretty, I don't think so. What do we have to do? We have to spend more money, we just have to spend more money.
We're spending on everything else. You just have to every two weeks. No. Yep, every two weeks, or a month, yeah.
I don't cut my yard every two weeks, I cut it every week. I don't want to get a letter from the city. And I'm sure most of y'all do, too.
If I may, Mr. Hunt, just on that same subject, something where, you know, we're very conscious of costs and all that type of stuff. Something we are experimenting with right now is some growth suppression type chemicals, and we're testing those in some spots around the city right now to see how they work. Technology's really come a long way in that regard, so you don't have to spend money on personnel costs and equipment, that type of stuff. Actually, this past week, at the Georgia Association of Public Works Professionals Conference, this is kind of a hot topic, you know, every city is dealing with the same type of thing. And, you know, there was a lot of good information that was provided in regards to these types of chemicals that can be utilized to hopefully alleviate the need to cut, you know, every two weeks or whatever, to like a month or something like that. It's not, it's not a miracle cure or anything, but we think it might be a viable alternative to look at. So, keep y'all posted on that.
The other thing with that, of course, is that we run into a delay, because that failure is just temporary. We originally had planned on having improvements out in the park, better grass going in and all that interesting stuff, but we ran into problems with that, and you remember with the bits, that can be, so. At least that location won't be an ongoing for other.
Wood long cemeteries, also a prime spot for complaints. People go out there, you know, go out there for purchase lots, and the grass is dehired. Is it contracted or is it?
It's in-house.
I'm going to disagree with one statement that you just made, failure is never terrible. It's true.
Yeah, but.
I used to work, I used to select it and grab it, now that we're killing it fortunately.
And then receive.
Stuff that's more. It go quick, fast.
Anything else for Tom? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Swann, yes? Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. I do have a couple of things. Just a couple of wonderful free events coming up. Friday, we have, of course, Food Truck Friday, the tenth, from six to ten downtown. Looking at having fifteen food trucks this time. Always a wonderful event, hopefully the weather cooperates, hopefully it's not raining super hot like it was today. And then, just looking ahead in September, September fifteenth is the Perry Music Festival, from two to twelve, at Burgery Centennial Park. Mr. Long has released the bands, a nice looking slate, headline, I did some patients, so it should be a great day. That's all I have. Thank you.
Have we had any complaints from the restaurant folks about food trucks?
Uh, no, sir, not from the restaurants. We have not. The first Food Truck Friday, we did have one complaint from a restaurant, but all this, everything we've heard from them has been quite supportive. Yes, sir.
Anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Yes, sir.
You, our private department did stamp items. The Department of Finance Administration, Ms. King?
Nothing.
You, private emergency services, department, nothing tonight, sir. Community development.
Nothing tonight, sir.
You, Ms. Palmer, can you give a further, from media?
I do.
Communication?
Yes, mayor and council. It's an exciting time, and I know some of y'all have already heard my spill about the Your City program, but it is coming up soon. We're very excited about it. I've gotten a few applicants in and applications in, and hoping to get more and more this week, but it will start September sixth. Y'all should have gotten a memo from me in your box about it. I hope that you all can be there for that one. That's our first one, we'll have it in the council chambers, and it'd be a great opportunity for the participants to meet you all and hear from you, and there'll be kind of an overview of how mayor and council set up and government set up. So, I hope to see you all there, I'll keep reminding you until September sixth, but hopefully it's on your calendar, it's from five to seven thirty. We will serve dinner, and I think that's it on that. But also just want to, if y'all know of anyone that you think would be a great participant in this Your City program, please pass along the information. I have some applications with me tonight. You know, we just look to have another great class, our first class was great, they're very interactive, asked lots of questions, and I know the second one will be great, too, but I depend on you all, and word of mouth works best sometimes with these. So, please spread the word that we're looking for participants that want to learn more about the local government, that it's fun, and, you know, you walk away knowing a whole lot about your government and all the great things that they're doing, so, that's it. Thanks.
Do you have anything to develop?
No, sir.
From the police department, Major Phillips.
Nothing, sir.
City clerk's office.
Yes, sir.
Our next meeting is tomorrow night. We have a pre-council meeting, five, upstairs in the conference room. Council meeting will be at six in this morning. Everything we do is open to the public, for the participation. And we will try to provide this final break, we check in on the weather, let it rain at ten to fifteen instead of.
I'll see what I.
Nothing else to come before us. Thank you for your interest in this session.